It's like, I don't remember what I'm saying. I just get a short wing it.
There you go.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
That explains her response to me. I just texted her something yesterday and asked her about her scripture. She's like, were you watching on Facebook? I'm like, what are you talking about? So that was it.
Her mom fell recently. They had to go to the hospital last week.
She's not well.
No. No. Somebody just came up the other day. I said, we keep trying to live longer. Life keeps trying to kill us. Your court order. Declare that we have a quorum. May I ask Ms. Gentho to please lead us in the word of prayer?
Father, I just want to thank you dear Lord for this day. Just thank you for the moisture you're sending our way, dear Lord. And I thank you, dear Lord, for this court. I thank you for our country. I just pray to Lord that your will will be done, dear Lord, protecting God, all of those who are on foreign soil and on our soul, dear Lord. You don't see the difference in it. I pray to Lord for this meeting. I pray that your blessings will be upon it and the wisdom for those decisions that need to be made will be had. Now bless each commissioner. Continue to protect them, dear Lord. And I ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. With our pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the court's permission, I'd like to skip down to four. And get Sheriff Wager taken care of so we can get him in and out. That's all right with everybody? Sure.
Thank you. Guys, we have Ms. Bosa here, David's wife. And she would like to present to the court, please.
Oh. I'm sorry. David loved it here. He loved everyone in this family. He said he never found such a wonderful group of people to work with and that pulled together. And one thing is he's like, I was a billionaire. I would go in and buy everything that the sheriff's departments and police departments needed. And so what I decided to do when he died was to set up the David Osat the memorial fund. And so, oh, it's the other day. And so far, I have $20,000 here that I'm going to donate in David's name in his memorial fund for the sheriff's department to buy those special radios and the equipment that they need that if they're out in the country or whatever. And I would greatly appreciate it if y'all would accept this for that in David's name.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. The entertaining motion.
I'll make it. I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Ray, seconded by Mr. Maxwell to accept the donation from Ms. Bosa to be used as in the memorial and for her husband. All those in favor say aye. Propose same sign. Judge also both.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Bosa.
Thank y'all awesome.
And go, go, we'll be thinking about you.
I know you will. And everybody has said that we're behind you through all of this. I really appreciate it.
Well, you're part of the family.
I know. He loved it here so much. So thank you all.
It was great.
And the more money we get, I'm going to continue to help.
Anything we can do to help you, just let us know as well.
Especially Judge.
I know the sheriff's done a superb job, really, keeping up with him and stuff. But he's got the entire county behind him, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you all so much. And God bless all of you.
God bless you, ma'am. Uh, let's see. Where else, where else you at, Sheriff?
Uh, there's nothing for the 911 update.
Audit. Uh, chapter 59 audit.
I would like permission for the court to allow Loretta to audit the audit.
It needs to be to ask.
I'll make the motion. We ask the auditor's office to audit chapter 59.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's crazy because that has to be done anyway. But anyway.
Anyway, all those in favor say aye. Propose same sign. Okay. We've asked the auditor instead of requesting the auditor.
Same thing.
Yeah. H discussing, consider taking action on the internet in the contract with AT&amp;T for fiber internet services.
So one thing that we have found out recently, you know, when I, when I first came over there, I thought we had a 50 by 50 fiber. Well, it turns out we have a 20 by 20 fiber. And with, we've been going through all the Motorola camera swap outs and all that stuff. And as soon as we start uploading, it knocks out the phones and knocks out everything else because there's just absolutely not enough bandwidth.
Come over to my office and upload a while.
Yeah. Well, literally, we have found out that our cell phones have more download and upload from our cell phones than, than we have the sheriff's office running the entire thing. So I've reached out to AT&amp;T. Our contract started in 2020. It was a two-year contract, so it's up. We're, we should be good on that. I've asked for a new contract. Unfortunately, I don't have the contract to present to y'all today. Um, it should be any day now. But what they said was, we're, we're currently paying 60370 for 20 by 20. And for 100 by 100, uh, would be 63780, which is a difference of $34.10 a month. Um, and we're just at the point where, you know, everything we have runs off that stuff. Um, we really need to increase our speeds. And I'm going to ask that y'all would consider and allow, uh, when that contract comes in, if you would allow the county judge to sign it, uh, so that we can up our speeds considerably.
Are you asking or requesting?
Both.
Whatever it takes to make it work.
How much motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Maxwell, seconded by Mr. Ray. All those in favor say aye. Propose same sign. Motion carries. I think, Sheriff, that's.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Ms. Bosa, it's good seeing you again. Come back up and see us.
I will.
Judge, when you sign that, I hope you be sure I get a copy.
Are you asking or requesting?
And I am asking both, too. Please.
You offered to cook something the other day.
I did. And they threw me out on the road.
Well, I'm not throwing you out. Loretta didn't offer to cook anything, so you get your sign.
Okay.
What do you want me to cook, sir?
All right, we're going to jump back to the consent agenda. Um, thank y'all for letting me do that. So Jason, Ms. Bosa.
So Judge, I have the regular minutes of 10:10 to 23. Uh, there is a personnel report. There are several certification of additional revenue. There are budget adjustments. Um, I don't see an investment report. Okay. And then I have the auditor's treasures financial report that covers uh, October the 23rd, 2023. Sorry, October the 22nd, 2023. And then the Department of Financial Reports. I have the Tax Office DMV, which covers October 2nd to the 8th and 9th to the 15th. I also have the Tax Fletchers Boat. And then that covers August and September. And then I have the Bills, Claims and Accounts. And then I do have, I have no purchasing acknowledgements, no open meetings, Public Information Act or cybersecurity. And then the contracts for the dispatch, I have Rising Star and Ranger. And for the emergency medical, I have Ranger, EMS Ranger. For the fire departments, I have Carbon, Cisco, Olden Ranger and Gorman. Excuse me?
Carbon?
Uh huh. On the fire?
Uh huh.
Yes. Um, if I could just go through real quickly. Um, the certifications of additional revenue are all still for fiscal year 2023. Um, the report of financial condition is as of October 22nd. And that's just our regular meeting report showing where we are this fiscal year. And you should have 10 sets of payables for today.
The payables, what's the sign?
I do have all of it.
Okay. Um, the motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Maxwell, seconded by Mr. Ray. All those in favor say aye. Propose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am.
While we're, while we're signing her name and not having to do anything, but it's too complicated, I want to welcome Ginger Cox. Has taken Shelby's spot and she is hit the ground running.
Welcome.
I'd run, too. I try to get as far away from her as I can.
Well, that's why I changed her to her desk so she can't get out. Shelby hasn't managed to, uh, run her off yet, so.
Is that how you used to talk about that? What's that? Running off?
Yeah.
Well, I just talked about. She's got a window she can climb out of.
Yeah.
Long way down. She's looked at it before.
Y'all tried it already, yeah.
That one went after your foot last time.
Yeah. It was on that one.
She was running.
I instructed my staff that if we have that kind of deal, they need to go out first where they can cushion my fall.
This is just for you, Judge. Cushion your fall. They'll probably throw you out first to cushion their fall. Ready?
That would make more sense. I can't blame that crappy pin on the counter. That was a silly pin. A lot of your sauce keeps all the good pins in, so.
Are you watching some food?
Mm-hmm.
Tom called Jerry.
Yeah.
I just give it to. Yes, that's probably more style.
Thank you.
That's Patrick's hero. Yeah. I like cowboys.
That's what I said.
I bought big cowboy shirts Saturday.
They roll clear.
Be okay. I don't want to get to work this weekend. This may be the only, this weekend, too, maybe the only weekend they don't win.
So you're going to be able to forecast the weather.
It's going to snow. And move.
We're good, Judge, if you want to go.
You're good.
I've been just waiting. We're on it. And Lord knows we have, we have a content line, son.
We're going to leave this. Item four, uh, burn ban. Been on. Turned off briefly. Put it back on and stuff. I think we ought to leave it on because we don't have enough rain to. There you go. Uh, C discussing, consider approving Kay Schaefer to Child Welfare Board. Roberta Broussard.
I'd like to present Kay Schaefer as a new member of our Child Welfare Board. And she is here for your consideration to go onto our board. And then I had brought some information that was requested about our finances for the Child Welfare Board.
We probably don't want to make that part of the record.
Okay. Someone look there?
Well, you can look at it.
Okay.
Just general overview, Judge.
You what?
Besides, do you mark this?
Okay.
This is yours.
Okay, I need a, uh, motion, uh, to accept Kay Schaefer to Child Welfare Board. Motion, motion by Mr. Maxwell, seconded by Mr. Ray. All those in favor say aye. Propose same sign. Thank you. Welcome aboard, Kay Schaefer. Thank you very much for your, your willingness to serve. Uh, was there something I need to sign or? No?
I don't have any, any good.
Okay. Well, Broussard, if you find something I need to sign, bring it back here and we'll be happy to sign it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You guys have a good day.
You too.
It's nice meeting you. It's nice meeting all of you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, we have one more thing. Discussing, consider adoption resolution authorized in the Eastern County Child Welfare Board to seek an IRS 501(c)(3) tax exemption. Isn't that right?
It's like, I'll send it. I'll send it today.
Okay.
Um, and I thought Brad was going to be here, but what happened in Family Code 264.005. Um, it sets out that the Commissioners Court will appoint the members of the Child Welfare Board. It also establishes that the Child Welfare Board is an entity of of the state, basically, for what they do. It does not set up anything for financial. And the Child Welfare Board is using the county tax ID for their bank account or their tax exempt status. Well, when we do the audit every year, the auditors want all of the accounts in the county tax ID, which includes the Child Welfare Board. But the way it is right now, I should have the Child Welfare Board's books in the general ledger and Christina should have control of the account. Um, they don't want to do that, nor do we really want to do that. So the option is to allow the Child Welfare Board to set up as a 501(c)(3) organization under IRS. So that's, that's what this is all about. And an attorney, actually, Sandy Kegel got with an attorney who developed this resolution. It's gone back and forth. Grant Stevenson has been working with them. And this is, this was the end result.
I certainly don't see a problem with that. Motion by Mr. Ray. Seconded by Mr. Maxwell. All those in favor say aye. Propose same sign. Motion carries.
And I have three copies. Would you sign all of them? One of those is free. And the financial information is part of the agreement that they'll provide financial information.
Is that quarterly or just annual? I like to stump you periodically. Just makes me feel better. I think it's quarterly.
Quarterly.
Uh, E discussing, consider allowing the Veterans Service Officer to host the Veterans Day program at the courthouse on November 9th from 11:01 at PM. Mr. Zerati. Did you shower today? Till you come up.
Hey, thanks for hosting me this morning. As you know, I'm pretty, pretty excited about my job and Veterans Day is coming up on the 11th, and I know we're closed on the 10th. So what I'm requesting from the Commissioners is I want to do a Veterans Day celebration on the 9th. And what I want to do is, if all possible, the weather's, uh, you know, the weather's permitted, I'd like to set up a tent out here with flags and veterans. And what I like to do is serve hot dogs, chips and drinks in honor of Veterans Day. Also, um.
It's on the courthouse lawn.
It's on a, it's on a court. It won't be on the street. It'll be right up here where you enter it. Now, I won't have the, the barbecue grill right there. I'll have it over there where the benches are. That way, there's no, no harm to any kids coming up or touch, run and touching. You know, we'll be away from that. Uh, it's all free. Now, there will be a donation jar there. If you want to donate to, to the veterans program, what I'll do with those monetary donations is I'll take them to Treasury. And I like to donate all the monies, whatever I get to the Texas Lions Camp of Eastland, Texas, to send, um, a disabled child to Kerrville for their camp. Uh, they're having problems with that. That's, uh, I think it's a great program to donate all the money back to. And, uh, you know, that's, I already talked to Ken Chapman about it, and he's all excited about it, if this, if this goes through. Also, at the same time, I'm bringing back the Buddy Poppy program. It's been, it's been dead for the longest time that I've known. I've never seen the VFW, American Legion, or anybody do anything with Buddy Poppies. And that's a big, big thing for veterans. Yes, everybody forgets about that program. And it's, uh, you need to really look it up on what a Buddy Pop, Buddy Poppy is. You know, it's, it's a remarkable story. But I like to revive that program again. And if, uh, if I'm able to, I'll do that at the same time I'm doing the veterans program. I'll have a donation jar there with Buddy Poppies. You know, they, uh, for every Buddy Poppy they get, it's a dollar donation, you know? Um, I, I just think it's a great program to bring back. So.
What was that camp's name?
It's, it's Tex, it's Texas Lions Camp International, and it's in Kerrville, Texas. We try to send at least two or three kids. And this last year, I think we only got to send two. So, you know, the more money they get, you know, it helps out for the child. But like I say, weather's permitted. If I can do that, you know, and this is for, I'll, I'll put it in the paper, put it on social media, have it out here in the courthouse, feed the courthouse, if anybody wants to come, you know, fresh hot dogs, chips and all that.
Of course, after you and I talked, I realized that was also the day of the lawman's luncheon, so.
Yeah, that's.
I won't be there, and neither will the sheriff. But, uh, it sounds like a good program.
Who is paying for the food?
I'm, I'm paying for the food.
Personally?
Personally.
Okay.
No, not, not. There isn't, there is, um, my son Joey works at Brookshars. And I was talking to him about it to bring these people. And he goes, well, how can we help you? So what if they donate, uh, or give me a gift card? Cisco's Brookshar, at the same time, said they might want to help out with that because they're, they're, they're tied into the veterans program. Uh, Walk, Walk for Veterans. They're tied into that program. So, you know, I'm not asking, you know, if they want to donate a $50 gift card or a $100 gift card, whatever they want to donate, you know, I'm going to accept it. But, uh, you know, hot dogs ain't that much.
Well, just be sure, because this is a county function, that all donations, whether it's a gift card, food, whatever it is, comes through Commissioners Court.
Right.
That you list it.
Right.
Okay.
So before the program, if I get that $50 gift cards or if I get any kind of donations from somebody, I'm not going to ask for them. They want to give them to, do I bring them to you to get them signed in before I spend them or?
Actually, if you will just list everything, because a gift card is, is not going to be deposited in the, in the Treasury, so.
There's a form, Reuben. There's, there's a little short form that you can just list everything on.
Okay, okay. But the month, all.
You don't have, do you have?
Um, I think it would be on that.
Oh, I've got the road materials donation form. I'll have to look at it if I can make a beat. I, I know we've got a form for road materials donations. I, I know we've got a form for road materials donations.
I think so.
Anyway, work with Shelby on that.
I will, I will.
Get you, I think, too.
But all, all.
Make sure all the eyes are dotted and teeth are crossed.
I will, you know, like I say, all the monies, whether it's two hundred, four hundred, five hundred dollars, whatever I get, I'll make sure I get it. And, um, bring it straight to Treasury or, or do I bring it to you?
The money goes to Christina.
Okay, to Christina. I'll make sure, after we set, get everything set and done, well, I'll bring it all up here, see how much we got, let her count it and.
She'll receive you.
Yeah, and then make it out to the Texas, to Eastland County Lions Club.
Even the Buddy Poppy money?
Even the Buddy Poppy money.
Okay.
Yes, everything I get is going to go to the Lions Camp for, to send a kid to camp or two kids to camp. Yeah, I don't want. So, that, that's, that's my spill to you guys, uh, you know, I think it's going to be a great program. Hopefully, I can make it happen.
Well, it knocks it off. We just had that conflict on the night, so.
Yeah. I, I'd, I'd like to go to Myrtle Wilks and get a steak and stuff too. I mean, I, I.
I gotta work for mine though. I gotta work for mine because I gotta emcee it, so.
But I will.
I don't have to emcee it, they asked me to, so.
But I will send, I'll get invitations and give each department invitation to, to it, so. I hope y'all can make, come and get a hot dog and stuff.
Any questions for Ruben?
I'll make the motion, Judge.
Motion by Mr. Rains. Second by Mr. Maxwell, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign.
Start getting busy doing this. I bet, thank you guys very much for saying. Uh, yeah, whenever I get out.
Well, Shelby looked for something or nothing else, maybe we can come up with something, I mean, it can't be that complicated.
I have the road material donation form on the front, I mean, on my.
If it'll be, it'll be just, if anything, Brookshars will be the only one, they'll be on their Brookshars, donate fifty dollars, whatever they give them.
I don't mind helping Robert change the form, I haven't.
Okay.
And whatever you do personally is a donation, so you'll need to put a monetary value on it.
Okay, fine, we'll do, we'll do. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, buddy. Um. I say, just leave the road material on there, just toss it out and put hot dogs.
Yeah. I honestly don't remember where I got that form, it come from over here somewhere, but we use it to serve.
I think it's on that computer.
Okay, uh, I discussing, consider approving resolution, resolution for the Grand Administration's submission of grant applications to the US Forest Service. For the Community Wildlife, Wildfire Defense Grant Program to the US Department of Agriculture. For the CWDG Projects and the Community Welfare Protection Plan. Good God. That is a mouthful. And also going, just, uh, just as a matter of, um. Time constraint, discussing, and also Jake, discussing, considering, approving, well, now, let's just do that separate because we've got, may have some discussion.
Yeah, we're going to have to have discussion on that. I think the first one is just saying that we have one. RFP return, RFP return with a Langford.
For the Granite Administrator.
And that was, uh.
And it was scored this morning?
It was scored this morning, they got a high score considering they don't think it's returned anything. I'll, I'll make the motion that we.
Motion by Mr. Rains to discuss, consider approving resolution. Mr. Maxwell seconded, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Jay.
I'll get your copy, Sherry. Ginger, whoever copy that's on.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Jay discussing, consider approving the list of equipment, supplies and services to include. On the application of Community Wildfire Defense Grant Program to the US, USDA.
Okay, this is, uh, we have to have all this done and it has to be submitted by the end, probably by the end of this week. It has to be done absolutely by Monday and next week. Um, we've got everything written in the grant, um, except for the equipment list. These are the, these are the, what we need to talk about. Um, the hiring, the granite manager, the manager, not the grant, the wildfire manager. And a wildfire specialist is non-negotiable. If you do not do that, you will not get the grant. Um, doing the private property clearing is also non-negotiable. If you do not commit to do that, you will not get the grant.
Who, who are the two that we have to hire?
The manager and the specialist, the risk control specialist.
Okay. What if they're?
Can't have them there.
What's that? What's your name, though?
You get to be.
Yep.
I was wanting to point you, sir.
Uh, I, I don't know, I, I didn't.
Cause that's going to be a problem, there ain't nobody out there.
Well, you're fixing to be flood the market because there's going to be a lot of counties doing this.
That's what I'm saying.
Does it require?
No, you can't, if you contract it, they're probably not going to do this.
So, what defines?
Have to do it.
We would have to do.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Yes.
We asked that question and they said federal law says that we can't.
Counties can do, can serve those.
We'd have to get a, a, uh, right entry.
Yeah.
To that property.
That's, that's what the specialist does.
Yeah.
No, can you service a specialist? A county? A county cannot serve as a manager and a specialist?
No, well, those are two new positions.
Yeah.
What are the requirements to be those two positions? Does it have a list of?
There is a training requirement to be certified and they'll pay for that.
So, here's my question on that, is that something, and I know I'm fixing to open up a can of worms here. Is, is that something that we could get our. A fire chief, local fire chief to.
It's a full-time position.
Okay, that, that takes care of it.
And so is the specialist. Because they have to do, they both have to do educational aspects of this.
And they'll be paid out of the grant.
And they'll be paid out of the grant.
Can we contract these?
No, no, I didn't ask that question, because he's figuring them as a full-time employee. Based on department head pay and foreman pay for road. That's what he basically salaries on. The other thing is, is after, after, if we do all this and, and we're in the process of hiring stuff and we get the equipment, we can go ahead and start cleaning. But after the specialist is hired and comes on board. Their, their number one function is to go, going to be able to go out and survey our county roads as right-of-way and tell us what we have to do on the county roads and right-of-way.
Which is the, which is.
Which is fine, yeah, yeah.
Because that's the, that's step one of this grant process. Is to prioritize those county road right-of-ways because those are natural fire breaks, so.
So, uh, that, that all being said, I mean, we can work through this, it's not a big deal. Um, the equipment must be used, have to maintain the paperwork on the equipment and all that. See, the, the, and we, I think we've all had this conversation about the five-year deal, this is a five-year grant. They're going to help, Langford is going to help administrate the grant for the five years. After the five years, the paperwork is going to fall back on us for the, for the turning in again. That means the hours and everything. Because we've all had the conversation of how a tractor or piece of equipment has to be before it's less than five thousand dollar value and it's got to be pretty old. In there, so we'll have to do that up until that point. This is, the, the other thing is, is when we, when we originally initiated all of this. Although the cap was ten, realistically, they said three to five. With the equipment that we're turning in now and the two positions, it's almost six. They, he does not anticipate that we'll be reimbursed for our labor. If they approve all the equipment, we will not be reimbursed for any of our labor costs on it. So, that's something to consider on all this. Uh, just because of the, of the amount. Now, we, turning in everything, which will be close to ten million dollars. But keep in mind that they're going to trim that way back when they, when they get to that point on it.
Are we going to do like FEMA where everybody does their worksheets?
They'll have to come up, we'll have to come up with a process and a policy. Because if the specialist goes out and says County Road one thousand needs this hundred feet clean immediately. We've got to have a policy in place that says how long you've got to go out there and clean that. It can't be inevitable, in other words, you, you just can't say, okay, and never go do it. We, we've got, and, and when they do the critical infrastructure. They go out and look at a water treatment plant, they gain the private property access around the water treatment facility. To clear a fire break around it for a hundred feet. We got to have a, the policy in place that says, well, we're going to have this done within the next three weeks or the next month or what, whatever it is. They have that in place on that.
Well, at the risk of two of the ladies in this courtroom shooting me. We probably need to have a central. Central reporting.
Yes.
Deal, um, which, that way we can, we can keep up with, instead of four, four of y'all trying to keep up with it, y'all would send in your reports.
Yes.
We would then forward those to whoever needed those.
And, and just like Shelby and I talked earlier on the equipment list. I'm going to put it all together, I've got everything, but Andy's already on everything now. Um, to send to, uh, Langford, I told Shelby, I said, I'm going to email it to you and you send it on. And everything that they send back needs to come to her and then out, outward from us, on that kind of stuff.
She's going to be the point of contact.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. I don't know, yeah, it, it was, but yeah, that, that way.
Kathy will cook you something, though.
That way everything's coming in and going into her.
No, I think it.
And that way you have a hard copy of it here if, if somebody wants to look it for.
And if you can, on your time, we'll help you with your time as well.
Well, I'm honestly, well, he don't care, I mean.
He might.
No, 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 he don't care. The, the report's going to be fairly simple, I would assume, but they, they will have, have to have a reporting. After the five years, it'll go, it won't go to Langford and them again, it'll go to the US Forest Service. Who is where the grant's coming out of.
Yeah, but I still say, we start working on private land, we're, all our time is going to go to that private land if that administrator is doing this.
Well, it's not, it's not private land, there's got to be a purpose. In other words, you can't just go clear something for somebody, it's got to have the critical infrastructure involved, in other words, it's got to have a water treatment plant around it. It's got to have a electrical substation around it. It's got to have, it, we're just not going to clear private property.
They have a criteria.
It's, it's going to have a criteria.
No, you can't.
Now, I will say this, part of the criteria is if we want to expand the county road clearance zone, in other words, we've got thirty foot, but we want to go thirty foot inside of a fence on either side or on both sides. To make a larger fire break, that's permissible out there.
Well, and I, I give you a good example, like, uh, when we talked about this Seabird Elementary over here. They, there's a, a lot of brush behind that school. And during that phone call, that's, we, we identified that deal and they said, oh, yeah, that'd be fine. So, you, you, we'd have to go to that landowner and say, we need a right-of-entry. And we're going to come in and we're going to cut a fire break there. But we're cutting a fire break, we're not turning, we're not turning that wooded, brushy area into a pasture for it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what people have to understand is that, yeah, you're going to get. Your fence line and, or whatever, you're going to get that, that break, but you, it's not a, a complete deal. So, that's a, that's a whole lot easier to, to manage than, you know, trying to clear off the hundred acres.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it won't be clearing, it'll, it'll have to have a purpose. And for like Darwin and I, one of the perfect examples for, for us over there is the college in the old ag farm. Because that's ten acres or twenty acres sitting out there, growed up by the baseball field and the athletic dorm that the college owns now. That would be more than happy to assign anything to let us go in there and clean that up. Here's the other side to that story, when you're talking about Seabird. Um, it, it may be something inside the city of Cisco that, that we work on. It may be something inside the city of Ranger that you work on because although they're applying for it. We're, we're going to have to step up too and help the cities. Do what they need to get done, plus it's, it's just beneficial for us because we're using the machinery. Machinery has to be used, it cannot sit idle. Um, it, here again, the five of us sitting here need to understand that if that machinery becomes idle, they're going to either come take it. Or we're, we're going to have, as Commissioners, say, hey, listen, either use it or I'm going to come and get it. Because if not, they're going to come pick the stuff up.
Yeah, I couldn't even say that for a long, I mean, if, in the hours we've already.
Yeah, I, I don't know, James, they have not, they just said machinery has to be used. Now, nobody has said what that is.
Twenty-five percent?
Yeah, nobody has said what that is. That number, I, I had, I asked that number since it was on the example and they said that is a made-up number, that's, like, nobody actually knows until the grants are actually out and the procedures put out.
Robert, I'll be, going back to the wildlife manager and wildlife specialist.
Wildfire.
Wildfire.
Yeah.
I always said wild, wild, I'm sorry. Um. Those salaries are set by the court, am I correct?
They're going to be set by the court, but they're, they're going to be put into the grant, so.
Yeah.
They're almost, they're almost, and that's the reason why they did the manager at a department head salary. And the specialist at a foreman salary. That, that's the two salaries I had available that I were looking, looking at. So, um, that, that's where they put the salaries.
I guess my, my question is, is what happens if you can't find somebody for that? Do we have to then go back and reconsider the?
I, I don't know that. I don't know that, I don't know that that aspect is going to be out there until somebody says, hey, I can't hire somebody, what do I do now?
So, after the five years, what we do, then we got?
Yeah. It's a five-year program. I mean, it's, it's, you know, Darwin and I talked about the same, that same issue is, are you putting somebody out of work in five years? But it needs to be known that, that it's a five-year program, that when, after five years, it's, it's done.
Yeah. Potential, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be done, but I mean, there, when I say potentially, there's a potential that. Maybe that that position could roll over into another position or something.
Yeah, yeah.
We could continue the employment, but yeah, I think, but I agree with you, I think upfront you need to say.
You need, yeah.
Possibly we got five years for you. We'll try to work in after the fact, but, but our only guarantee for you is for five years.
Yeah. So, I just want to get, I mean, everything that I know, that I've had the conversations with in the last week out there on the table. So, that everybody understands, uh, why we're, why everything's getting done like it is to the best of what I can understand. Uh, is it's on a point system. You, and you follow this A, B, C, D points, we get, we get forty right off the top because we're low-income, high-risk county. So, there's forty points right off the top, so we're, we're competing for the other sixty points to get the grant. Um, in, in the past, it's eighty point five, I think, is the lowest grant that's got any funding at all. So, that's the reason why it's so important that we commit to the, the use of the equipment, the hiring of the personnel. And, uh, that kind of stuff.
It bumps our score.
It bumps our score up.
Do you know what you're going to get in or won't?
Yeah, he's, he's turned his in, you got a copy of it?
No, I thought you said he didn't.
No, yeah, I said I got it today.
Oh, okay, sure.
Now, you sent me a copy. This is new equipment?
Yes.
That will be furnished through the grant?
Yes.
So, after the five years, you've got this equipment, what happens to it?
You still own the equipment, that's what we're, the, the, the interesting aspect of this grant is. You have to use the equipment and document and turn in paperwork for the equipment annually until that equipment devalues to less than five thousand dollars. That's what we're talking about, how old does a tractor have to be? Before it's less than five thousand dollars?
Pretty.
But pretty old, yeah.
You're going to have to, I, I, I think what Robert's saying is that you're, you're going to have, even though it's a five-year grant, you're going to have to continue to do wildfire mitigation.
Yes.
Because that's what the equipment's bought for, so even at the, even when the grant ends at five years, you're still going to have to have that thing on the road. Doing some kind of wildfire mitigation and it's, of course, you guys know your county roads better than I do, but it's almost like, you know, eradicating mesquite. You know, by the time you get to the end of the line.
It's growing.
It's time to start back over again because it's already grown up behind you, so.
And that will apply, given the same.
Yes, yeah.
Vegetation?
Yeah, as long as it's been used for that, you're, you're good.
Yeah, the other aspect is that there's also a, the ability to do, uh, herbicide treatments twice during that five-year period for, twice for a particular stretch. So I'm assuming that you can.
I don't think that's written in our grant or letters, because I have a hard time with. I, I pers, I, I don't mind if we hire somebody to do it, but there's a tremendous amount of liability involved if you start spraying herbicide.
Kill someone else's trees?
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
Let's, then let's stick to.
Yeah, there is, the liability on the herbicide part of it, I, I, I think is, is just too much to deal with on there. It, it, it's going to be a learning process because of the fact that it's not cut and dried and everything laid out in front of you like some of them are. But I, like I say, I had, uh, everything, but Andy's put on the submission deal. He gave it to me this morning, so I'll get it done when I get back. I'll send it on to Langford and them for them to do the, he's, uh, he's working on, he wrote the grant. He's just waiting on everything else.
You want a coffee in the minutes?
In our, in our office, like I said, we'll do whatever we can to help you guys, but the, but the, but the information's still gonna generate from the commissioners.
Yeah, yeah, the, the reporting part, the, the other side that, that you need to be aware of too is when they say clear, they mean clear. No trees at all left in the right ways. Uh, they want everything cut back to ground level. Removed or mulched to, to eliminate the fuel.
Well, you know, and talking to Robert, you know, he was kinda explaining that right-of-way clearing deal. We're, we're a whole lot better off getting all that stuff out because then all you gotta do is go back and mow it.
Yeah.
As opposed to continually fighting that brush. That's, that's growing up in those right-of-ways and stuff. And I'd asked Robert, I said, well, what have you got in your right-of-ways? And he said, well, I got trees that stick around.
Yeah.
In my right-of-ways that, that need to be gone.
Yeah.
Because they, they, I mean, honestly, I, I, I love trees and I think they're pretty, but they're also a fuel source and we've already seen, I mean, if, if, if we had not experienced two devastating wildfires, I'd say, man, let's, we need to, we need to save the trees, but they're, they're a fuel source and they're nothing but just another catalyst to jump the road.
All of us have been out there in those deals too, that they, they create a funnel like you have never been to. If you've never been to one of those fires on one of them roads, you've got tall trees on both sides. It's unbelievable the, the heat that they generate as that comes through.
And then you're stuck with clarity anyway.
Yeah, well, and that's the other side with herbicide that, that I have a problem with. If you go down there and spray it and you kill it, guess what? You just got a dead tree. I mean, you still gotta remove, you know.
Man, it's damn, like, they're going around right now spraying some of our, it's just.
Yeah, and they let them fall and on the fences and everywhere else, because they done it already once.
Yeah, they done it a lot now.
Yeah, yeah, because you get phone calls with them across the roads and everything because they just kill them and don't do anything with them. So we actually have cleaned out the fence line?
No, just to the, to the special.
Unless it's a designated area.
Well, I mean, potentially, potentially that wildfire specialist would come in and say, yeah, on this county road, you're fine cutting it to the fence line, but then at this particular area here, because there's infrastructure, we need to see about doing a right of entry to expand that another thirty feet.
Where you, where I see you having situation is the lake. Because they're gonna, the population density plays a, a role in this, okay? So if, if, if there's one house out there, and I don't mean this mean, but there's one house out there, they're gonna take less focus on that one house than they are on a road that's got ten houses on it. At like at the lake. So when they're out there driving around the lake, and I, and I know most of those are not bad out that way, that's where they're gonna focus on situations like that. And then, and then the main, I foresee for us out there is the water, uh, district stuff. Because westbound's got stuff like right now from Ronnie's house and, and places. I can perceive that those are, will be deals that they, that scattered throughout the county on their facilities that they're, they're gonna try to clear back. All I can do is throw it out there and tell you what I've figured out kinda. And Darwin may have more information, I mean, I'll throw you under the bus.
I think that information presented to us, this is what we've discussed with the potential grant administration for that. Um, my understanding is, is the same as, as Commissioner Rains, uh, as far as the requirements uh, for reporting, for usage of machinery. They have not laid out for any of us a, a time potential, uh, you know, quantity of hours the equipment needs to work or anything like that. I think we'll get that, um, as they become more defined in the process and more and more of those things. Uh, so I, I would say that he's giving you as much information as any of us have. So, uh, we'll be discussing, uh, with my counsel, the Seating County Council process. Y'all are discussing today, other than, uh, the city of Cisco, city of Ranger, city of Eastland, the city of Carbon, um, are coming together on the, uh, the implementation portion.
Carbon, not Gorman.
It's Carbon.
That's what I said, and then you told me no equipment.
Oh, I thought it was Gorman.
It's, it's Carbon. Um, for the, for the, uh, you know, the, uh, the equipment portion of it, um, on the, of course, we're, for the planning portion of it, we're, we're in with, uh, with the county on that. So two different functions. We have to get the plan, get it approved, uh, and then we'll be eligible for the implementation portion of the grants.
Darwin, can you say what, um, what you guys are thinking about using that money for?
What are you gonna ask for?
Yeah, what are you asking for?
Oh, as far as equipment?
Yeah.
Um, each of the entities is applying for, um, a pickup truck and a, a haul trailer for a skid steer that has a mulcher, uh, on the front. And then, uh, also a box trailer, uh, that would house, uh, chainsaws and, and other appliances like that. And additionally, I know that you guys had, had talked about the side boom shredder. And as an, as an individual entity, they didn't feel like we had enough right-of-way miles, uh, to justify that to this grant. So the four entities are applying on the implementation side together as a grant and hopefully we can get another one of those, uh, side boom shredders as well. So that's where we intend to go with the, with the request of funding for implementation.
Well, the interesting deal on the ones that I sent y'all the video of and Darwin's, and it also is that they, they, the, the front end has a box skid steer attach, a skid steer attachment deal on it. So anything that'll fit that skid steer will run on the front of that machine. So a broom or blower or something for like cities that have paved streets to blow the stuff off of it comes in handy in that type of situation. I do know that, uh, Tyler with Langford has already reached out with the, uh, area rep for Mower Max and, and got more information on the machinery, on the heads and all of that, um, from them that I'd already sent in with the, with the quotes that I forwarded on y'all.
So on the mulching, is that gonna be something that you guys can take to your yard and, and let individuals get it or?
Mostly on the side.
Okay.
Because basically what you're doing is you're chewing everything right where it sits.
Okay.
Throwing it on the ground. You're just making small pieces.
It's like a chipper.
Yeah, it's like a chipper on the end.
So you're just gonna leave it on top of the road?
Yeah.
I mean, it, 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 it's grinding it up, but it's, it's like you throwing stuff in a chipper. It's spewing out. Wood fragments.
Leave it on top of the road?
Yeah, but it works as a, uh, erosion prevention type of situation also. Because that was one thing we, we talked about is another reason why we don't wanna use herbicide. We have enough problem with our ditches washing away. You, you kill every piece of blade of grass inside of it. I promise you, you'll have more of a problem. It's the only reason why I don't dislike Johnson grass, because it'll grow anywhere.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's the information in a nutshell.
Thank you, Robert. Thanks for doing that. Any questions from the commissioners on this deal? So I need a motion to consider approving the listed equipment, supplies and services on our application. Posted by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Frenshaw. All those in third say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. K discussing considering exemption from required inscription of automobiles used by permissive attorney's offices allowed in transportation.
I would've done it if Paul would've been here, but since the other guy showed up, I'm not so sure.
Is there, uh, any input from the DA on that or? That's.
I'll make the move.
I, I think it's a good motion, motion by Mr. Rains. Second by Mr. Frenshaw. All those in third say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Is that something we have to do every year or is that just something that?
It's the first time I've ever done it.
Yeah. I would think one and done.
Did you vote Judge that's rotten down?
Uh, yes, sorry. Uh, L discussing considered cooperative ambulance service contract, Ms. Jento.
Yes, we have finally gotten this back from the, um, hospital district. They did vote on theirs, I think it was last week, Mr. Mr. Joe Rot said. So we just need, um, approval of it. Uh, the judge has reviewed it. Uh, our contribution is a hundred and twenty thousand, which is budgeted. Judge, not confirm that.
Yeah. Posted by Mr. Rains.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in third say aye. Discussing consider road crossing agreement on blah, 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 blah. Between Eastland County and the Grand Prix Pipeline LLC.
Could you send me a fully executed?
Yes.
Uh, it'll be probably.
There will be another one of them pipeline agreements coming in. This is not the guy I talked to. Yeah. I don't know. I don't recognize.
One Mississippi, two Mississippi.
There's one coming in from Onyx also.
If I remember right, you said somebody sent them.
Well, how many called?
But I don't know who that was.
Well, the guy that called me that I thought I talked to, he talked to you and got your, my phone number from you.
I don't know. I don't know if this guy called and I gave him the number of one of y'all or what.
But this could've been him, because there is another pipeline coming through also.
That's like twenty.
I have all the original stuff he sent to, which he wrote on his own blog. I don't need the new one.
This is a pipeline that they, it's running rooms all the way down there to the gas plant. It does a little.
Okay. Four crossings, what?
Four precincts.
So we got four different crossings.
We've got four precincts in a G and county room.
And what did you say those roads were?
I didn't.
Yeah, yada, yada, yada is not what they say.
And ad infinitum. Any discussion from the commissioners about the road crossing agreements or any questions? I would accept the motion to approve road crossing agreements.
I'll make it.
My, motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Maxwell. All those in third say aye. Oh, same sign. Any emergency minutes?
Yes, sir.
What do you think? They could've at least just right back in the county judge on there.
Well, you would think they did that, they were crossing too.
Yeah, they were little, they were little, they were lingering. They were lingering getting that into Shelby.
The other one's gonna have interesting time because they're gonna be out there with the wind turbines around that town. They're gonna be laying a twenty-four inch loop, twelve miles long around where they're working. See if they can cover the what, I'll tell you.
They run over each other.
Yeah.
Are we gonna say it's a big four year, all, all this stuff?
I think when it comes down to the nitty gritty on it, that we'll be able to get together and do projects like the college and it benefit both of us time-wise for machinery use too.
Absolutely.
Because those will be very simple and well-oversight projects that won't have any, they'll just get it done.
Need to start, uh, I assume we need that wildfire manager and specialist.
We won't, we won't do any of that until the grants approved.
Yeah.
Until we get back with the final numbers on the grant.
Might not hurt to keep an eye out though, for somebody to touch that criteria. We take first for the court.
Make motion to adjourn. Yeah. He asked while he was signing stuff.
Okay.
I made a motion.
Posted by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Wilson. All those in third say, you betcha.
You betcha.
Motion carries, adjourn.